It had the highest rating and again, we're going to share details. We'll be here momentarily. We also considered, like I said, the Mempeen program, Quill, our other existing resources. And we kind of compared that to what we currently have, which is our Common Core Literature Series, which is a Savas series that we're currently utilizing. Their new program offering from Savas is called My Perspectives. So we looked at that in depth. It only received a 25 out of 40 rating points from our team. We currently use Sager vocabulary and great source textbooks. This is that new Savas resource, the My Perspectives curriculum program that our team looked at, that only received a 25 out of 40 rating points. And you can see some of the main reasons why our team felt that way. And I'm going to ask Ms. Carell here to jump in at any point to provide further details. But generally speaking, it really just lacked overall readability and design. The team felt it did not be appealing to our students, the online platform that students would have access to. It just had limited resources. And also additionally, typically Savas programs do not pair very well with Google and the Google platform, which we use heavily. So that was another reason that we are not recommending the My Perspectives program.
Yeah visually, it was terrible. You know, it looked as if they had really not put a lot of money or development into the program. And honestly, when you compare it to StudySync, it was even more shocking, just like the difference in user friendliness, but also just genuine appeal. And you know, our audience is a very media savvy, on digital devices, 24/7 group at this point. So you can't give them something that looks like, you know, a group put together in 2005 and think it's going to be received very well. So that alone is enough to kind of give us all pause. But then the further we dug in, the more that we realized there were some difficulties. That's before you even look at the limit in terms of books and things that come with it. So we were all in agreement and it, there was no debate of any kind. All of us looked at it independently and came, when we came together, had the same kind of conclusion about it. So.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Dixon to share with you the student edition of the textbooks of the StudySync programming. And there is also some literature that we're going to pass around to, to give you more details of the program. We did bookmark the units and the grade levels so you can kind of easily see books coming around through to view. And these are just the hardbound textbooks. What we really took in in depth to look at is their online user platform, which was exemplary. And not only that, but just let's get, we want to go over a few details about that for you. We really felt, the team really felt like this platform would allow our students the highest level or opportunity for growth and is fully aligned to the standards. It allows our teachers to adjust all of the literature that is presented to them by reading level. I believe it gives four different options for adjustment to reading level. I know Ms. Carell wants to talk to you about the scaffolding writing process. There's opportunities that students can share out their writing and have it reviewed by their peers. The accessibility is huge for this and, you know, will come up on the students' Chromebooks. There is also a mobile app, so for our students that, you know, maybe don't have access to their Chromebook at home or they left it at school, that kind of thing, they can access their homework via their smartphone. There's an embedded plagiarism checker right within the StudySync programs, which our team felt was a much superior option to have. And it is Ed Reports approved and got a high ranking from Ed Reports.
Yeah, across, across all of the areas that Mrs. Thompson just brought up, it's absolutely superior. And I think for us, the real selling point is that not only within the reading, but within the writing in particular, incredibly easy to access scaffolding activities. A little scaffolding activity would be something like, if I could take an honor student and give them a piece of literature and say, please read this, and here's a prompt and write about it, that they, they can usually handle that. But when you start dealing with students who are maybe even at the college prep level and certainly at the general curricular level, they need a little bit more support. And so the same exact assignment with the same exact story, literally there were page sheets that will give them the paragraph that essentially they should be writing, but with pieces taken out. And so we can adjust those levels for students who are writing a significantly lower level than what their grade would say they should be writing at, the whole way up to students who really don't have our support at all. And so in the reading, it's exactly the same way, questions, exactly the same way. And you can differentiate between each individual student. I literally can go in and, and right now, for example, in my ninth grade class, I have seen several students go off because they're on a ninth grade level, you know, for many, many reasons. And so I can go in and I can level what they're doing and it will automatically level everything. So once I make that setting, it's good to go. And I can do that as long as necessary. So what it does is in a time-saving way, it allows teachers to really differentiate for students who are all over the place. And, you know, I'll just say, as a teacher, one of the greatest challenges is you're trying to present especially a piece, a single piece of literature to an audience that has anywhere from a high interest, high ability level to a very low interest, struggling ability level, within the same room at times. I have some students who are at a grade level and then some of them reading, you know, three and four years below, talking with them in certain cases. This makes everything accessible to all of the students. And that's what we're really proud of, I mean, in terms of our ability to use this and really target students that now we're targeting and we're doing our best with, but we don't have maybe all of the tools that this provides. And I remember early in my teaching career, you know, talking with other teachers and we were, we were saying things like, we wish we could have a bank of just questions and different sheets that were a lower level for these different stories. It's here now. It's arrived. I mean, hallelujah. So we're excited about this and the power of this in a classroom, for sure. And that's before you even talk about plagiarism checks and things like that. And that's becoming something that we really need to look at, at our level, because with the accessibility of students using the software internet, trying to really teach them what plagiarism is, before they hit that college level, maybe suffer a consequence, you know, inadvertently, it's more and more complicated for us. Having an embedded plagiarism checker is going to really help because, you know, a student gets caught once, twice, and we use that as a teachable moment, not a punishable moment, to, you know, really explain how does this work? And that's a problem they're not going to be making when they're paying $20,000 to $60,000 a year at the college level and maybe getting called in for a very uncomfortable conversation. So there are many, many benefits to this program. And we're very excited at the prospect of having it to use for our students, for sure.
And within the platform too, all areas of the assessment cycle are already addressed for our teachers. So they're readily available to, you know, start out the unit with the screening and diagnostic assessment to find where, you know, students' levels are, the whole way through formative assessments and then summative assessments at the end and then. So it really is a very comprehensive platform that provides our teachers with numerous tools to be able to provide to our students.
And if you notice too, you know, when you pass the books around, and I must feel guilty doing that, because our students, probably 99% of the time, will not be touching the textbook. They're going to be accessing the platform online. We're only going to get one separate classroom. We don't really even need a book for students, that's for sure. And in English right now, we sit in high school, we're very, very Google-driven. All of us enjoy using it. We load all of our things on that platform. Our students are on their computers really regularly. This will be just a game changer, you know? Because now I have, you know, older textbooks and the language level is not appropriate for a lot of my students. And there are stories that are great stories, but they're just, they're low interest for the students that we have now. And the vocabulary is arguably above the ninth grade level officially, even though it's a ninth grade book. So having access to this is going to be just huge.
And speaking of the books, so you are aware each of the grade levels is presented by thematic unit. You correct me if I'm wrong in anything that I say. 11th grade is, you all have the option to go the route of American Lit, Brit Lit, that we had historically here in the junior and senior sequence. So we're able to do that, which is really nice, because they, not only have they, do they have just sort of the regular starting beginning with the book, but they have thematic units too. And so they, they already have those online for American Lit, Brit Lit, which is fantastic for us. We don't have to go ahead and piece all that together. It's already there for us as well.
And it's in line with the book.
Oh, it's absolutely.
We're lucky because we have some of the books too already, you know? So it's really, it's a nice interplay between what we've been doing, but the next level that we're leaning there are two of those.
So our recommendations to the board is for a StudySync digital textbook for every student. And a quote that we provided to Dr. Baker provided the seven-year licensing, which is in line with our curriculum cycle, a classroom set of textbooks, a Mempeen user account for each student, which again, provides that individualized vocabulary practice for our students. To continue to utilize Quill.com platform for the individualized grammar instruction. Additionally, to continue to use our existing approved novels and DVDs that help supplement the curriculum. We only have one new novel for approval and that is the book feed. And that book will enter into and comes approved with the StudySync tenth grade curriculum. And does the board have any questions for our team? I don't want to make this sound like Semple High, but we have a lot of newer people in our audience. When you say it's aligned to the standards, would you like to explain what you mean when you say it's aligned to the standards?
So Pennsylvania, obviously they have state standards and we adhere to those already. For us, it's reading and writing and speaking and listening standards and thereby grade level. And so this book is aligned completely with that. So we're in good shape.
So we're following the state standards?
Yes, absolutely. I'll say too, just as an aside, when we did the Zoom with the support people for StudySync, they were fantastic. So any training I think that we need or any, you know, struggles that will come up using the platform, I feel incredibly confident that they'll have answers for us like this and will be able to help us implement it, you know, in a very powerful way from a day ago, which is nice.
Yeah, I would back that up with the McBrughill rep that we have used for our math textbooks that we got this year and adopted for this year and many of our science textbooks also for this year. She's excellent. And we emailed her a question about any, what the textbooks or the platform or how do we do this on Google? She gets a response within a day. So the support is really exemplary with McBrughill.
No other questions?
This is just for ninth grade?
Nine through 12.
Okay, so once you have your account, your license, your license for a month or a couple of months.
These are.
So then each year you can just sign for ninth grade, right? Would you keep that same?
Yeah.
That's your digital account.
Yeah, the digital account will be with us all four years.
The vocabulary.
That's on their website. I was thinking this is the first page.
Okay, the Mempeen, is that, is that a separate account now or is that the same?
That would be separate. So is Quill?
Just scroll down and look at it.
So they have three different ones.
And those load every year, like, you know, like a continuous one. So you start out with the new teacher, we load them and, once they, once they sign in as a student, they recognize that we wrote. But we start with the diagnostics every year. So.
Thank you.
Next we have the Springfield Middle School and it'll be just nothing but Amplify ELA program with grades six to three.
I actually am going to come pass something around. The artful English department is here. They have really looked at the options that, you know, they are going to present here, but I'm going to let them speak. Mrs. Jones has bravely taken the speaking role, but we have Mrs. Kaminsky also in the Mrs. Nosh and Mrs. Van Coney. Typically, we have our sixth grade teachers this year. Mrs. Van Coney has stepped up into our Miss English role, so she's seventh this year and then Mrs. Kaminsky's seventh and Mrs. Jones eighth. So they have been working very closely to fill that gap that we have. And I'm going to pass out a packet for you that has all of the information she's going to reference, but also some samples for you to look at. And before she speaks, we have like eight, three, seven, three and six. This is specifically made for middle school, which is why we're so excited about this. And I'll let her speak more to that. But there are actually like eight books for each one because they're consumables, which ties into the reading and writing. So I don't want to say too much because she's going to say all of that, but as you're looking at these, they go together and you can see that there's a journal component, there is a consumable piece for the students, and then the teachers have for each unit, a different teaching guide. So I'll just spread them out and you can pass those along, but everyone will get a packet. And I'll let you.
I'll just wait till they have their packet.
All right. So as an English Language Arts team, we reviewed multiple curricular materials before choosing Amplify ELA. One of them actually being StudySync at the high school, that we thought is a great resource as well. Just, this was much more fitting for our middle school audience and needs and all those things, and I would, you know, be talking about that. From our first review of the program, it was very apparent that Amplify was different. Different in a way that really excited us as teachers for the first time and maybe a very long time for a lot of us. Different in a way that excited us as teachers and different in a way that understands that the future of what education is and will become. This curriculum program, more than any other we've reviewed, is innovative, 21st century-focused, PA standards-aligned, rigorous, challenging, differentiated, research-based, engaging, interactive, and most importantly and uniquely, created specifically for middle school students. As a team composed of past high school, middle school and elementary teachers, we can say with certainty that middle school students are different. They are not simply younger ninth graders, which is what I thought coming in as a high school teacher. I was very wrong. Or just older fifth graders, which is also very wrong. They are their own unique group of students with very specific needs and capabilities. Amplify understands this and has created a curriculum solely for them, taking into consideration their attention span, early adolescent cognitive development, their academic needs for both enrichment and scaffolding, and social emotional needs. Amplify has also created all unit topics to align with adolescent interests to keep students engaged and motivated. We are very excited to share with you what Amplify is and why as a team, it is our choice for the ELA curriculum at the middle school. Okay, so on the first page of your packet, if you open that page, you'll see the Ed Reports score in there. And that's what I'm going to be referencing next. The first page in the packet is the Ed Reports ratings for Amplify ELA. When reviewing curriculum, Ed Reports is used to compare different curriculum programs across several domains, very similar to like consumer reports for different products and things like that. Ed Reports scored Amplify at the highest ratings for grades six, seven and eight across all domains. These domains include alignment, text quality, building knowledge and usability. Amplify achieved a perfect score in each area. And you guys can see that in your packet as well. They achieve the highest rating for all grade levels across the board, which was, you know, really enduring to us and really showed us the quality of what the program is. Okay, on the next section there is about the writing program within Amplify. So following the Ed Reports score and information on writing program, with Amplify ELA, students writing every day, either in their print writing journals, which you have sort of floating around there, or a digital workspace. One of the aspects that we really loved about Amplify was its flexibility. The curriculum can be solely digital when needed, solely paper or a hybrid of both to meet student and classroom needs. With ample practice in all the types of writing required by current standards, students learn to figure out what they've observed and thought and then find just the right words to convey their views to an audience. This curriculum builds writing stamina for each grade level, which we have really seen our students struggling with as of late is writing stamina. So knowing that Amplify can help them get to be better writers will help all of us and help the high school once they get up there as well. And it focuses on all aspects of the writing process. They still have to go through, you know, pre-writing and planning and drafting, revising and editing and publishing. They have to do all those steps within Amplify as well. And then on the next page, you'll see the differentiation key and legend. It says, I think differentiation has a top there. This was one of the biggest sellers for us when it came to Amplify. Amplify ELA enables all students to access higher level texts, much like the high school was describing. So allowing all students to read and understand those higher level texts, it's very important that they can all do that, but at their level. Providing scaffolding for students who need additional support and enrichment for students who require an increased challenge. Amplify offers six different levels of differentiation. Those levels are core, substantial, ELL, moderate, light and challenge. These levels of differentiation within Amplify allow teachers to provide seamless instructional activities for students with IEPs, 504 plans and gifted education plans, as well as English language learners and regular education students. All students use the same rigorous texts, but the activities provide levels of support so that all students can be given the necessary tools and level of resources to help them achieve academic growth and content mastery. The levels of differentiation are flexible, which was also really important to us. Needing students where they are and allowing students to move up to higher levels as their needs change and their skills grow. Through its differentiated instructional model, their curriculum is designed to provide equity of access to excellence for the broadest possible range of learners. And then following that, there's just a little bit more information on how Amplify supports ELL learners within the curriculum. It just sort of gives an overview about that. And then in the final section of the packet, you'll find that Amplify aligns to the Pennsylvania state standards. So that's the last page there, just showing how Amplify aligns to Pennsylvania. We very much appreciate the time tonight and we look forward to implementing this curriculum at the middle school. We're all very excited about it and what it can do for our kids. Thank you for all you do and for hearing our recommendations this evening.
Do we have any questions for?
Mrs. Jones, I have a question.
Yes.
First off, this is in honor of teaching in a classroom for that really.
It's really enjoyed you, Mr. Thompson.
It was fantastic. It was fun. So I just want to clarify, is Amplify and the StudySync were proposed for the high school, are they two different companies and two different type?
They are.
Will they still mesh or they still like, I don't say compatible, but like what you learned in Amplify will mesh in and work well with what we learned in high school? Or is it a challenge? Do we know that answer?
So this was a conversation the principals actually had to make as well, since this is our area for English. Being a former English teacher, I had a different perspective on math per se, because math builds upon all of the topics where English does that of course, but when you start getting into deeper studies, as you heard, like it could be American Lit or Brit Lit. For middle school, for us, our definite need is reading and writing to things that they are interested in. So you can essentially take multiple texts from multiple places. As you can see, like, we still use Quill, we use NewsELA or NewsELRO, people did differently. But anything that you're taking text-based, you still use the same concept. So for us, it's not necessarily has to be K to 12, the same program, the same style. It's all interest-based and level-based. So we did look, we also looked at the program at the high school once, but whenever this came across everyone's desk, that was our second choice, but this was by far first just because it's very difficult to get middle schoolers interested in, in a lot of things, especially reading and writing. And the lady that we worked with actually utilized it in her own classroom and they were completely virtual for part of it. And she said she had the highest motivation and engagement from these stories. The program is extremely interesting, that they actually have some of the authors read it to the kids. So they themselves who wrote it are actually reading to them. They also have like different plays, the kids get to do a lot of mystery figuring out. So it moves very quickly among the different topics that middle schoolers have a very short attention span. So for us, it was a no-brainer that even though it's not the same, it will still provide them, if not more than what their program would have been at the middle school. So we feel confident that what they K to two and the three to five will also recommend are different, but when looking at them all across, we feel that it will not hinder at all in the ELA department.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks for asking. That was my question. I was taking the same opinion. You know, because we, we were sold on the high schools program and then a different one, but we're sold on it too. I loved everything you said about it, so, but it's good to know that, I mean, they don't have to be the same.
And when we say disposable, it's like students get one of these textbooks every year and they write it and they use it. And then it's a new textbook for the next year.
And Mrs. Thompson, Amplify is not available at high school, right?
That's correct. I was just going to say when.
Not yet. They're coming out.
It's like, no, you're too late. But they are actually really about in the next two years.
Yeah, so we would have taken a look at that had it been available to us. And we have run into this in the past where some of the books are taught at the middle school level and they might appear like in our curriculum. So if we run into any of that with the adoption of these new programs, I think we both probably have the ability to make adjustments to them. So we have had to do that in the past and we will do that again.
And we know for a fact, like Romeo and Juliet comes up in this, but we talked to them about the ability to teach it. And they just do snippets in this one and focus very solely on maybe like characterization versus the whole story. So it, they get the story, but they talk about very different things and we don't do the whole pieces that they would do. But she also said that we can eliminate that and they have other options. So if we, they, they work together, but they know that.
Yes, we will be very communicative with the high school staff about what they're comfortable with and what we're comfortable with, making sure that we're not stepping anyone's toes because that's important to us too. You know, they're part of our team as well, just in another building. So we want to make sure that we're all on the same page for sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just thank you for all the work.
Definitely. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we would have a recommendation of visitors. We have one person signed up.
It's nice to sit back there in the last two meetings, as a teacher, everybody gets to talk for half hour, 45 minutes, but it's a shame that the parents only get five minutes. My observation the last six months dating here, and I went to the board to think about this, seems like every time we talk, there's no communication. Everybody wants to go into a tac mode and defend yourself and stand up and want to be bright, instead of really sitting there and listening to what we're talking about and where we're at. And maybe interpreting your position a little bit differently and seeing where we're coming from, you know. I read a post on Facebook the other day and the issue about the lunches at the school. I'm not saying it's happening all the time, but it's happened. This isn't the first time we have addressed this here at the school. And that really frustrated me. So I put a post on Facebook. The intent of my post was to reach out to the parents to get feedback from this community of what's going on. And I can tell you, that post blew up. I had twenty-eight comments from parents that were stating pretty much the same thing. I had four private messages. You know, I know it doesn't happen all the time, but I, it is an issue that needs addressed. And I would appreciate if the board and administration would quit saying, "That's untrue," and sit back and look and say, "Oh, is there an issue here? Do we need to address this?" You know. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe you're wrong, I don't know. But we all need to work together and try to come up with an issue, you know, a solution to this, you know. I've been hearing parents complaining that their kids are crying, that they don't want to go to school. We all know this is a tough time. But we need to learn to work together and communicate. That's the biggest thing this community doesn't have, communication. Nobody wants to listen. I was small business in this community for years. And I've been hearing stuff for years about the board and administration and people not wanting to listen. They don't get back to people. You're here because you were elected by the taxpayers. You have the right to listen to them. You know? There's no reason this school should be having problems with lunch. I went into the audit. There's plenty of money there. Let's do something about this. If they're running out of food, you've been working with Metz Food Service since 2010. You hired them full-time, 2017. At that time, there was four head cooks and twenty part-time assistants. Now we can't get anybody to work. Why? Are you not paying enough? I know some other reasons. We've got to do better to work together. I have a group of school board people and taxpayers and residents. Let's work together and fix these issues together. That's what makes a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, COVID cases are continuing to trend downward. Recent cases also seem to be milder with individuals recovering more quickly. As a result, we are proposing to the board pending your approval at next week's board meeting, an adjustment to our health and safety plan to allow the school-based close contacts to remain in school with a mask for ten days from the date of their last exposure, as long as they are asymptomatic. As opposed to what we have been doing, which is requiring to stay home for the first five days before returning with a mask for six to ten. This adjustment will further our goal of keeping students in school for in-person learning to the greatest extent possible, and we feel at this point that will be safe and forward with that. So that will be on next week's agenda for the board to approve. And then we will be able to put that into effect immediately assuming you can get a agreement. I would like to express our thanks and our appreciation to all of our food service workers. Approximately two weeks ago, as you know, I was made aware of some misinformation being circulated on social media after lunches were delayed at Central High School on Monday, March 33rd. On that date, we did have a number of food service workers call off sick unexpectedly. And although our cafeteria manager did her best to realign the remaining staff, we shuffled them between buildings and that kind of thing to cover, she also operated a lunch line herself. The lunch lines at Central High School did end up being open on Monday that day, leaving students with less time to eat than they would have had. Any students who needed more time were provided the necessary late pass to get to class, and no one was denied a lunch, which is what was reported to me. I don't, I don't see the stuff on social media available there, but I just heard the reports. So after hearing that there were some concerns, a social media, a respectful messenger email was sent out to all parents just to make sure that everybody had the correct information regarding this isolated incident which occurred on March 31st. Principal Stephanie Thompson and the food service manager Denise Lamson also immediately worked together with the food service staff to further improve efficiency in the cafeteria in the event that we would have such a situation again. Mrs. Thompson reports that lunch lines have continued to flow smoothly, allowing students sufficient time to eat without the need for late passes, although late passes are available always in every school should a student ever need additional time. There's always different things that arrive, like a bus runs late for some reason, or students arrive late in the morning for breakfast, you know, those kinds of things. So we always have those available. All of the students always have the opportunity to eat and more time than they need. We acknowledge that lunches were delayed on March 31st, and we did so in response to social media allegations which were shared with us. No one, though, actually contacted the schools directly with any concerns. It is our understanding that the allegations on social media now include other concerns, such as our portions are too small or our food supply is insufficient. This is what we're being told from people who are telling us they're seeing on social media. I have provided the board with a handout you have in front of you. It shows you what constitutes a full meal. So you see the different colors. They have to have a meat of fluid milk, grain, fruits, or vegetables. Students are required to choose items from at least three of those food categories in order to meet the required nutrition standards and qualify to get a free lunch, which currently, if you recall, all of our students are still getting free lunches. You don't have to qualify based on any comment. But students are, however, not limited to the three items. In addition to their entree, which includes proteins and grains, students may select up to two fruits and up to two vegetables as well. They are not required, however, to take more than three things if they don't want them. It's their choice. So the other side of the paper also shows you what a meal could look like if a student takes all of the things that are available to them. But again, it's their decision how much they want to take based on what they would like to eat. As was shared with the board at that board meeting earlier this year, we have experienced some supply chain disruptions in food service, just like we've experienced them in paper towels or whatever. I mean, everything, everywhere you go, you're dealing with that. When I go to restaurants, the grocery store, even when I order things online, there are supply chain issues in our country this year. Metz has done a lot to counteract that. They have expanded their vendors to account for that so that they're purchasing from additional places to ensure that we're getting the things that we need. Although we can't always get everything that we really want at the time that we really want it, we're not lacking in food supplies. We are getting food, just not maybe, maybe we wanted to have like, well, I'll give you an example here, situations that are out of our control. Like, for example, recently we had a situation where we get lettuce delivered to us, okay? And it comes to us delivered on a truck. And that we, obviously lettuce is not something you can freeze and store ahead of time. You have to have fresh lettuce. So, you know, we can only buy so much, or it will rot and need to be thrown away. Well, the food truck company didn't have a driver and didn't have a substitute driver, and so they didn't deliver our lettuce. Well, if they don't deliver our lettuce, we don't have lettuce, you know? So we made the salads with the lettuce that we had available at that time. But like, you know, the truck comes at ten o'clock on Thursday, and when it doesn't show up because they didn't have a driver that day, you can only make the salads with the lettuce you have. So then we didn't have as many salads as we would have liked to have, but we had other meals that were available. So, you know, there are situations like that that have arisen that are basically out of our control. The things that we can control, we are controlling to the greatest extent possible and offering the students multiple meals. But situations do happen. Thus far, our efforts to investigate the various rumors are not supporting those allegations. But that said, you know, we are listening to what we're hearing, and we have arranged for a cafeteria audit to be performed. And a team, including a manager of food service from another school district, a registered dietitian, two chefs, two district managers, and one director of business manager, of business management, will be observing and assessing our cafeteria operations and providing us with feedback. They will share any areas for improvement. They've been asked to tell us the good and the bad and the ugly. You know, that's why they're here. Because if there are steps that we can take to improve our lunches, we are very happy to do so. Whenever anyone has a concern, it is imperative to us that that concern be reported to us in a timely and direct manner to the employees who it is most directly involved with, because they can answer questions. Like on the day when the salads were short, we would have been able to say, hey, you know, truck didn't come today, right when it's high, you know, it's like, that's out of our control. This allows us to best explain the situation, to investigate what happened, or to address the matter as applicable. When we hear concerns as rumors or through third-party allegations, we often don't have sufficient details, and that makes it very difficult to address any concerns that there are, to know what they are. There are proper channels which need to be followed. And the first step is to hold an informal and direct discussion with the applicable teacher or librarian or food service department or employee, whoever that may be. Generally, that will resolve the concerns, our experience. When people let us know, we talk about it, work it out, and that resolves it. If not, the complainant should submit a written complaint to the building principal outlining the specific nature of the complaint, relevant facts, any adverse effects, action requested, and contact information. If the principal is then still not able to resolve the concern, the complaint then gets submitted to the superintendent. And if the complaint is beyond my authority or requires board action, then I refer the complaint to the board. We all benefit from working together to resolve any concerns. And following the proper channels for reporting concerns allows us to actually know when and if there is in fact an issue and how we can immediately address it. Our employees take pride in our district and in our schools and in their work. They work in our schools because they care about our students and about our students' best interests. We respectfully ask individuals with any concerns to please address those through the proper channels so that we can work together to successfully resolve any matters. In regard to sports, the regular season for winter is coming to a close, and seven of our wrestlers are advancing. District six individual wrestling competition being held this weekend at the Altoona Fieldhouse. Our girls basketball team had a tough season this year. They were a young team. They grew incredibly, but didn't have a lot of wins. But they just inched into postseason play as the fourth seed team. Our boys basketball team is currently the number one seed in District 6A, so we expect a home game to be scheduled next week as part of the PIW playoffs. And the boys have also qualified to participate in the LHAC Conference Championship, in which the top four teams face off in the semifinals. That is scheduled for February 17th, and the finals are scheduled for February 19th. Finally, our bocce team is currently undefeated with a record of five and O. Central High School gets to host the Blair County Bocce Championship in early March. We don't have a definitive date for that yet. And then the winner of that match will advance to the Special Olympics regional competition. So good luck to all of our athletes and teams as they enter postseason play. Congratulations, you've had a fantastic season. And then finally, we did receive notice that we were awarded the maximum allocation for both of our state schools grants for which we applied in the fall of 2021. The first is a $40,000 grant to be used for compensating Chief Prentice. He was out in the home here with us today, and he's been a fabulous addition to our team for like the last five and a half years, I think. Chief Prentice, with his, the grant covers his salary in the first year and then half the year and then half the following. And then additionally, we were also awarded a state school's grant.
So it is normal, like it has been like I brought it completely in the case, not to say, nothing spectacular, but that wasn't horrible.
More not red lobster, sorry.
No, that's fine. No, if you look, if you look at my stomach, you know that I'm a good eater. But I ate enough on a regular meal, and I was fiddled for the end of the day. It was, and you know, just, it was the other day, but it was, we had choice of Mac sticks, which I hate, and the kids love the Mac sticks, but I don't care for Mac sticks. Or you could have had a turkey croissant sandwich, that's what I got. The vegetable was cheesy, cauliflower, which was excellent, and tomatoes, and I don't like tomatoes, so I didn't take two vegetables. The fruits, I had a box of raisins and peaches, and I had a milk. And it was fine. So just letting you know the firsthand experience rather than hearing, hearing, saying, I did it, I ate it, I was happy. I also, I have two kids, one at middle school, one at Mersburg Elementary. I ask them every day, how was lunch, how was school, blah, blah, blah. Cooley's complaint in fifth grade said, oh, I think it was Friday or Thursday, they're supposed to have sloppy joes. And they had hot ham sandwich instead, or ham. Sometimes they essentially cause they didn't have sloppy joes. So I guess it's probably that COVID supply shortage or whatever. So they still had a meat sandwich, so just, just as that for my firsthand experience. And I can add onto your sports report, Dr. Baker. Central High School has a bowling club team, and they'll be having their first match ever at Nuffland County coming Saturday at two o'clock. And then Huntsville's ninth upper park is going to host Central High School bowling in Nuffland County on Saturday of the fifth of March for their first bowling matchup. And my long term is maybe to get bowling as a school sponsored sport. And districts that sponsor sports have more district championships and bowling also. Delphont and Nuffland County have got a way sponsored teams, and then we'll be going that way. I'm talking to Pauliesburg, and looking at a couple more teams which are able to have.
Is that a go-in sport?
It is. Women's bowling collegiately is actually one of, there's a lot of scholarships for females, collegiate bowling. St. Francis has a women's team, which is a women's team. San Sebastian has a women's team. Like, volleyball is one of the fast-growing men's collegiate sports. And bowling is one of the fast, or is a fast-growing female collegiate sport.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I'm kind of like, if it's COVID.
So I think, I could be wrong with this concept, but I think there's like eleven boys and one girl on the club team-ish.
Something like that.
Yes. I think it was like thirteen members, there's like one or two girls. One of the girls, actually, who doesn't, who's in the middle school, bowled this weekend and bowled a four or five under something. So she's at Bull Pen Club, and now she's also helping for Nationals this coming July. So we have some, we have some good bowlers in this system coming up here if you want to.
Thank you. Thank you. Just for a couple more questions. Did any child not get a meal due to lack?
No.
Did any child not get a meal due to time restraint, where they said they were not enough time being able to sit back? Did you have a large amount, any volunteers sign up to help the cafeteria with the lack?
Not very many volunteers that have signed up to help the cafeteria, or many people that are applying for the cafeteria positions. I will not, I will say though, I mean, speaking from personal experience with my own children in Nuffland County here, especially at that high school level, students are not forced to eat if they choose not to. So I had a daughter who never ate lunch, that was her choice. She did not want that. I had a son who ate everything in the cafeteria every day, and a daughter who chose not to. So, you know, there are kids who potentially didn't eat, but that's their choice. If they want to eat the food available, and if they don't have time, they can certainly stay. You know, we arrange for them to have enough time, but there was a glitch that day.
And it's, it's hard to get, you know, cafeteria employees were down a large number that day.
Yeah, they just, lots of people on that day, we were not expecting that.
And it's been, like, it's been hard to find employees, not only for the district, but for.
Well, not just in food service, I mean, employees in general, anywhere.
Transfer, P5 employees, so.
It's not just here.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree.
We had the same position open, had like fourteen people sign up for interviews, and two of them showed up, twelve were non-showers.
Food service, bus driver, paraprofessionals, teachers, all of those positions are becoming harder to fill. But like, I go to restaurants that I used to go to now that are not open for dinner or have shorter hours, because they don't have staff. And this is across the board, this is not unique to this for restaurants.
I was just trying, Mr. Benrath was saying, like, I also interviewed my teacher, and both are in high school. And it was conveyed about, you know, how school, blah, blah, blah. I gotta give props to the administration, Justin Miss Thompson. My son said, you know, I, first time I was seeing the principal, you know, in the food line and everything else, he said, "That's diversity of workforce we have." And I want to commend you and the staff. My son actually said, he said, you know, there was no, there was no cafeteria to do that. Principals, assistant principals, teachers jumping in and got it done. Pretty much made it happen. You know, everybody's struggling, but if you're in a restaurant and, you know, there's not enough servers on it, that's nothing different than this school. And the fashion of the school and what had happened to that didn't help. What did help was finding out what really happened. What really happened was there was no police, and everybody checked in.
Do you think everybody's talking about that one day, though?
Everybody got that done. Not once during the street.
Talking about one day.
And that had this, the food service workers are doing a lot every day. Like I said, that cafeteria manager is not responsible for running the line, but she's running the line pretty much every day. She's running the line, and also, like, legal adjustments, like the example, they're using the paper products when they don't have staff and so that they don't have to have a person on the dishwasher line so that they can get the food served. So there's a lot of adjustments being made to accommodate your staff. While I appreciate God, because that, you know, it's good, always good. Any optimization, there's things that need to be addressed. It's great, great.
You know, I'd like to just add the one last point to reiterate something that Dr. Baker said. If, as a parent, you have an issue or a concern, you need to, you need to bring that to the district. Because taking it to Facebook doesn't, doesn't do anything, it doesn't do anything. Bring it through so that it can be addressed, so that it can research, so that we can contract to it. Send it an email, then you have, you know, you want to say, well, yes, and so I'm going to be able to say, say that you get a response and all, but that's the best thing that you can do, is bring it forward so that then if, if there is a problem, you'll see patterns. Then by, by that, you, you need data to see patterns, and you don't have data if you don't, if that's true.
Call a lot of people liars.
I just have one clarifying question. It said March thirty-first, so this was last year that this happened?
No, I think that's...
No, so did I say the wrong date?
It says March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
If I said twenty-fourth, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
January the first, January is the month, the thirty-one is the day.
January thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, that's what I thought, I was confused.
Jim, before you go on, I would just like to say too, I mean, I work in food service, and I totally understand being short-staffed. We as the servers have to pitch in, and what we normally do, we're tap out to the max. So hands off to those cafeteria workers that were so short, everyone else helped out that day. You have no idea what it's like to go to a table and to say to a guest, I'm sorry, we don't have porter houses. One weekend, we ran out of two different kinds of beer. We ran out of three different kinds of steak.
I don't think that was an complaint.
And it is an issue for food supply and multiple things that are changing constantly. We have issues with straws. You know what it's like to tell somebody you don't have a straw? Same way with the students. There are issues that come up, and you do the best that you can that particular day and that particular moment. And I've had people not tip me because I didn't have the right thing for them. You know what? It's gonna be like that right now. My Chris almost complaining the other day because they didn't have a, a certain chicken patty that he wanted, it was something else. And I said, no, I said, at least you have food to eat. And supply chains, I just explained to him because he's in third grade. And so I was, you know, just doing the analogy, just like it is in the restaurant. And it's just the way the world is right now. And I, I just commend the cafeteria workers. I know what it's like because we are, as servers, are trying to just... When we as servers are just trying to wait on the public and in the restaurant, it's a very challenging job. And I can't even imagine what it's like for the cafeteria workers and only having half the people.
Very, thank you. So education...
I don't care about students. I've got twenty-eight complaints.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
They're calling a lot of people liars.
Well, I was there myself on my stall.
One day.
I don't know whose line was...
One day.
Yeah, how many cases?
A lot of people are liars.
Okay. We'll just move on to educational program committee. Okay, it's case law.
Just asking if you can respectfully...
Item A will be an overnight trip to the Pennsylvania FFA State Legislative Leadership Conference. Item B will be the acceptance of the gift of library books for use at Martinsburg Elementary School. Item C will have the 2022-23 school calendar.
Can you touch this on that for a minute? Because I noticed we don't have a very specific calendar. The state would plan to have this being postponed because of the election, yes?
We, we, that was an in-service day, and we had to move the in-services because now the election board is, is planning to utilize the mayor's board of governors and the jury, all right, the history of our school for the election in November and this election in May, and we're not able to still operate schools with that going on. The requirements and restrictions and the safety concerns and all that, it's just not possible for us to do this at the same time. So we had to, we shifted the in-service days to the days of election so that we can move our staff away, move seventeen hundred students. I mean, there's dangers we have to be concerned about, so we can manage it with in-service, and that's the ship.
We don't have a choice.
No, they, they are asking for it, we are required to let them have it. We indicated we didn't really want to utilize it, but it does impact our schedule.
Does that, you know, why, right?
Well, they're not, they, they take schools throughout all over their county. They're not necessarily using every school, but every district that they test, at least some buildings we utilize, we just won't be, any of the three that are broken. No, I think there's gonna be some other areas.
Other areas.
Yeah, but there's just certain schools, I think, that they're gonna choose to, uh, or...
And item D will have the health and safety plan.
Find me in some legal committee.
Item A, the financial reports, the general fund for January 2022 and food service for December 2021. Item two, disbursements, the general fund for January 2022 and food service for December 2021. Item C, settlement of the real estate tax assessment deals. Item D, authorization for the business manager to log in natural gas prices.
Touchdown on that, why do you do that?
George, our current contract, and this is in place everywhere, that our natural gas, automatic blocks, who am I actually getting to do that? So obviously, as we get near winter, winter months, where the gas prices are being monitored, and when gas pricing starts to go, look like it's going against us, then we, I usually get a call from our brokers, or I'll be contacting the brokers for those both days, and they'll let me know. And then they'll actually get pricing out. They'll take a look at, you know, like, January through March, or January through April, or even January and February, whatever we, whatever I feel is gonna benefit us the most. And they'll look at different blocks, and then I can give the, they'll expect to that.
There was some contracted language, and they're saying that after the lock-in price, they'll send a transaction confirmation that we need to pursue because we tried negotiating for a longer period of time, which they weren't willing to do based on industry scan, but this is a way to allow, you know, and blocking those prices for test interest during that.
And item E, awarding of category two E rate bids for year twenty-five. Awarding of category two E rate bids for year twenty-five for the 2022-23 school year. That's it?
School services and activities. Item A will have appointment of spring coaches. Item B will be stipends for game workers and officials for the 2022-23 school year. Item C will have tentative overnight athletic trips continued upon qualification by the student athletes for the 2022 Interscholastic Unified Indoor Bocce State Championships, that's March twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-two in Hershey, by the Southwest Regional Wrestling Tournament, March fourth and fifth, 2022, in McMurray, Pennsylvania. The PIAA State Wrestling Championships, March tenth through the twelfth, 2022, in Hershey, Pennsylvania. Item D will be your revised administration recognition form for the softball pitchers.
Who's it, buildings and grounds?
Item A, just a request for waiver of rental fee for the American Red Cross blood drive at the Central High School, April fourth, 2022, seven thirty a.m. in Cleveland.
Please try to get there because they're just getting short of the blood currently.
Personnel and executives.
Okay, item A, we will have the hiring of a professional. Item B, we will deal with the tenure. Item C, we will have a rest or active approval for our B. Item D, additional vouchers for the 2021-22 school year. Item E, the board being scheduled for the 2022-23 school year.